Well, good afternoon and welcome to the Rancher Mirage City Council, Library Board, Housing Authority Board, the City Council representing the redevelopment successor agencies' regular meeting of Thursday, April 4th, 2013. So glad that you're all here and a special welcome to those of you who are tuning in from home. We'll begin today with our pledge of allegiance. I'd like to ask Kim Malcolm Valente if you would please lead us in our pledge today. Please stand.
Can I open your heart? Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Cindy, will you please call roll call?
Councilmember Hobart?
Here.
Councilmember Kite?
Here.
Councilmember Smart Rich?
Here.
Councilmember Wild?
Here.
And Mayor Hines?
And I am present. Okay, we will begin today with a special presentation. I'd like to invite Carol Tittlebaum to please join me down front. Hi Carol, how are you? Great, let's come right over here to the middle here. I'll get on this other side of you. All right, well, we're excited to have you here today. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're here?
Yes, I'm Carol Tittlebaum. I'm with Prevent Child Abuse Riverside County in April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And we wanted to let everybody know that we brought blue ribbons, so if you would please wear these as your signal that you are in favor of preventing child abuse, we would really appreciate that. That started many years ago with a grandmother whose grandchildren were abused and died because of abuse by her mother's boyfriend. And so she made blue ribbons to represent the bruises on their bodies. And so that's why we have the blue ribbon to signify child abuse and that we work really hard to prevent it. And the statistics are one in three girls and one in four boys will be sexually abused by the time they're 18.
We forget sometimes that it happens to boys too, don't we?
Yes, and we have a yearly conference called It Happens to Boys, and it's usually the first weekend in March. So look for that on the Internet, and I hope that you'll come and support us.
Thanks a lot, Carol. What kinds of things are you going to be doing during Child Abuse Month?
We have lots of day in the parks for the kids, the Day of the Young Child in all the different cities, in La Quinta, Desert Hot Springs, Palm Desert. So look in your paper and come out and support that. It's really important to bring awareness to the fact that children are abused every single day and die every day as a result of abuse.
Great, thanks Carol. I'd like to read a proclamation for you here as well. This is a proclamation on behalf of the City of Rancher Mirage honoring Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2013. Whereas children deserve a safe, stable, and permanent home in order to become productive members of our society, and whereas child abuse is found in families of all, social and economic classes, and every racial and ethnic group, child abuse impacts the entire community. And finding solutions depends on community involvement to nurture families and inspire future generations. Whereas preventing child abuse in Riverside County, where the organization that you represent works in collaboration with the Department of Public Social Services to educate the public to reduce the incidence of child abuse and provide other services to help alleviate its effects. And whereas all citizens should become more aware of child abuse and its prevention within the community and become more involved in supporting agencies to raise their children in safe, nurturing environments. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Scott M. Hines, Mayor of the City of Rancher Mirage, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2013, in Rancher Mirage as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Thanks for being here, Carol, and bringing this to our attention.
Have we brought posters? This year, we're really targeting anti-bullying, so we have posters and we have the ribbons for everybody. Thanks.
Thanks, Carol. Thanks for leaving this. Appreciate it. Have a good day. We will continue now with another presentation. This presentation is being brought to us today by Mark Olson. Mark, if you'll come on up. Mark is the Government Relations and Public Affairs Specialist that works with California Department of Food and Agriculture and has a very interesting presentation for us today. Mark, take it away.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. We really appreciate this opportunity. My name is Mark Olson. I'm with the Citrus Pest Disease Prevention Program, which is a program that was created by the state legislature in 2009 to help combat the spread of invasive pests through California citrus. And we also have John Hooper here, who's with the California Department of Food and Agriculture. And the reason that we're here today is because government officials, as well as citrus growers, are very concerned about the spread of a specific invasive pest called the Asian citrus psyllid that has been found in Coachella Valley. Now, this psyllid wasn't originally from California, or Florida, or the United States. It was originally found in China and then has made its way into California through China, Brazil, Mexico, Florida, and then in 2008, it was found in California and has been spreading throughout Coachella Valley. And the reason that we're very concerned about the spread of this pest is because it can carry a very deadly citrus disease to where there is no cure. This citrus disease is called Huanglongbing, also known as HLB in the world of acronyms. It's also a little easier to say. The good news is, we haven't found HLB in Coachella Valley, but we have found it in California in Hacienda Heights. There's only been one find of this disease in California, so that's very good. One thing to point out, it's not harmful to humans, it's not harmful to pets or to livestock, but it is a death sentence for citrus. If your citrus tree gets infected with HLB, it will die. Again, there is no cure for this disease. We've seen the impact that this disease has had on places like Florida, where there was a recent study done by the University of Florida that pegged the damage at $3.63 billion. They've lost over 6,600 jobs because of this, and they've had to destroy over a million trees because of this pest and another pest actually, and because of this disease in Florida. So it's been very devastating. And we are working very closely, the growers are, with the California Department of Food and Agriculture. And John, I'll talk a little bit about that relationship and the response to the finds in Coachella Valley.
Good morning, afternoon. Anyhow, we've been fighting the Asian citrus psyllid since 2008, where we first detected it in San Diego County, very close to the Mexico border. The pest is known to be in Florida, Texas, and now California. The main threat is, it's a vector, and it can move that disease around. And we're trying to keep the numbers from building up in ag settings or in backyard settings, because what we don't want is the introduction of the disease to push out and cause the collapse of citrus plantings throughout the state. Now, we've been treating successfully, or spraying, to control the pest where we found it. We work with local governments, hold public meetings before we do that, and we do it with the permission of the individual residents. And we apply materials that are very safe, and we've had a lot of success in knocking back the insect numbers and keeping this, with the work growers do, out of production settings. Oops, I just turned that off. I apologize. We have a couple pictures here that show what we're doing. We primarily use a trap to find it, but we do go into people's yards with their permission and visually survey for the pest. You don't have to have an entomology degree to look for it, and that's one of the things we ask for the public's help, is we have an 800 number that will appear on the monitor in a second. But we have a vacuum device, we have a trap, and visual survey where we look for the pest. And it's very small, and it's about the size of an aphid, but we can detect it very easily. It has to go to citrus to feed, reproduce, so we've got the place we need to look for it. When we do treat, we're using materials that are very homeowner-friendly. In most cases, they're being sold at supermarket or Home Depot-type shelves, the same active ingredients. And we apply it with very low-pressure equipment directly to the citrus trees, and it's been very effective. And we just don't spray. We actually monitor the environment where we're applying. Before we apply, we interact with the responsible environmental agencies to make sure there's no threatened or endangered pests in the path of what we're doing. We have 100% safety record. We take fruit samples, we take soil samples, we take air samples, take leaf samples, and we're having no issues with the safety of the program.
Could you describe what this pest looks like? I don't see anything here that tells us exactly what we're looking for. That's one question.
We are going to leave some very nice pamphlets at the end of our-
Well, can you just describe it?
It's-
How big is it? How long? How round?
It's about the size of an aphid, if you're familiar with an aphid. It's, one of its characteristics is it tends to sit at a 45-degree angle as it sits on any of the citrus stems.
Does it go above or below the leaf?
It tends to be on the stems and the upper leaf surfaces, but it can be also on the underside. It likes the fresh, young, tender, what we call the flush growth on the citrus tree.
Yeah, who doesn't, you know?
Yes.
The spraying that you talked about, can you spray prophylactically that leaves the tree immune for a period of time?
We use two products. One product is a contact insecticide, which actually only has a four-hour half-life in sunshine. It's just a knockout punch. The other material we put in the soil, it's absorbed into the root system and it protects prophylactically long-term, nine to 12 months, depends on soil conditions, health of the tree, watering practices of the resident, but it gives long-term protection. Yes, sir.
And what are the circumstances in a given community such as Coachella Valley, Rancher Mirage, Palm Desert? What are the circumstances that lead you to recommend prophylactic treatment for people who are not commercial providers of citrus, but who have plenty of lemon, orange, and grapefruit trees around?
We wouldn't recommend spraying unless there was approximate or close detection of the pest near their premises, and we'd want them to be, say, within 800 meters of where something was detected. And also, I would say relatively close to an ag production setting.
So you've got to get some evidence, physical evidence, that they're there before we get around to spraying prophylactically?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Just a few more slides here. So, you know, the value of citrus in Riverside is very large. It's $120 million industry. But in addition to that, you know, backyard citrus is priceless. We've grown up with citrus all throughout this region, all throughout Southern California.
Is that 120 million or 120 billion? I mean, 120 million doesn't seem like it's-
Well, I can double-check that number, sir, but that was the value that I received from the crop report from 2011.
Okay.
And, you know, with so much backyard citrus out there, you know, there's some unconfirmed studies that say seven out of 10 residents in Southern California actually have a citrus tree in their backyard. You know, so we're actually calling this as a call to action for homeowners to get in your backyards and check your trees for this pest. It's something that you can do very easily, either once a month, whenever you're out there watering, or tending to your trees. Another issue is transporting citrus. You know, if you have that aunt that lives up in Fresno, or that cousin that lives out in Yuma, don't take citrus from this area out there, and vice versa. Don't bring citrus in from those regions into here. You know, a lot of times, these invasive pests all move around from human movement. That's how they get around. So we're really trying to prevent the movement of citrus by residents. And I think, you know, an important thing people can do, there's a, the California Department of Food and Agriculture has a 1-800 number, which is 1-800-491-1899. And if residents actually think they found the psyllid, they're not sure, but maybe their tree's infected with HLB, or they have the psyllid, the bottom line is, play it on the safe side and contact this number, and an ag inspector can walk you through it and let you know if it is actually the Asian citrus psyllid or HLB. And they may actually send an inspector out there to check your tree for you. That's how seriously they're taking it. So we are working with cities all throughout Southern California. One of the things is, you know, a lot of times, people don't know who their state senator is, or their state assembly member is, but they know where City Hall is. And a lot of times, people come here first for information, and they come here to, you know, find out what's going on with this issue. And so we would just wanted to use this kind of as a jumping-off point to let you know that we're out there working on this issue. Should your constituencies have any questions regarding this issue, we want to be a point and access point for information for you, and then have just a great working relationship with you as we work through this process. Because, you know, as the Asian citrus psyllid has been found in Coachella Valley, the disease hasn't, but a lot of experts believe that eventually the disease is going to show up here. It's basically the Mary Had a Little Lamb story. Wherever Mary went, the lamb was soon to follow. Wherever the psyllid has gone, the disease has soon followed that, the pest, wherever it has gone throughout the world. So we're expecting that the disease will show up more frequently, not only in Southern California, but in Coachella Valley. And so that's why we're trying to make these relationships with city governments like Rancher Mirage. But we have a lot of information online. We have a great website, Californiacitrusthreat.org, where residents can go get more information, see pictures, get some basic tips on what they can do to best protect their own citrus trees. And, you know, certainly, we've already been in contact with city staff here and, you know, have developed that relationship, and we are working on some outreach efforts with you as well. So we would certainly appreciate, you know, helping keep residents informed. So we think we have a good plan in place, but it takes the cooperation of residents as well as city leaders, and certainly, we appreciate this opportunity to present this information to you.
Steve, you had something to say?
Yeah, I think one of you contacted the Vector Control District, and I represent them as well. And so the Vector Control District has this red imported fire ant abatement program going on. And so because we were prohibited from providing them with all the contact information for the property managers and HOAs and country clubs, what we have agreed to do is to send out a notice to all the country clubs and HOAs and property management companies that are participating in this program to let them know about this issue and that we're passing on the contact information to you guys.
Yes, sir, and we definitely appreciate that activity.
And could we also, Randy, link it from our own city website as well, and maybe provide some sort of a graphic on the homepage?
Maybe we could put it on RMTV.
And on Rancher Mirage Television as well. In fact, yeah, in fact, this presentation would probably be excellent to just rebroadcast from this council meeting as a standalone, as a little filler for Rancher Mirage Television as well. So great, so we will definitely work to promote this too.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Randy, do you have a question?
I had a question, maybe Bill Oppenheimer, our facilities manager can answer it. We had been collecting, or maybe you can, we have been collecting fruit at City Hall to distribute to the local food pantries, and we're not doing it this year. Is this why we're not doing it?
No, there's no restriction on moving the fruit itself. It's when you move a potted citrus tree, or you dig one up and move it where you can move a whole Noah's Ark of potential insects. Thank you.
Great.
Randy, on your point, I suppose it was there for me to see, but I sent our gardener with trees full of, or with oranges taken from trees that had been full of oranges and grapefruit. And they phoned me from over here saying we couldn't leave it here. What is the deal? Why did we close that down?
I don't know. I thought maybe it was because of this. Bill, was there a reason for that?
Hidden Harvest notified us that they were suspending the fruit this year, and we thought it was because of this issue. So we don't know, we just assume that, but we can find out exactly why they decided not to do it this year. But they notified us they weren't going to do it this year.
Did they indicate that it was just going to be a one-year timetable on that?
They didn't. So we will call and find out, but we had heard about this issue, and we just tied the two together and figured that's what it was.
Well, because it's such an important issue, particularly for food, for people here in the valley, may I suggest that if they don't do it this coming year, that we try to find somebody who will, so that we can go back to that program and get that food distributed throughout the valley in the manner that they used to.
All right, we'll get an answer, and we'll get something back to the council. I'll send out an email or something letting you know what's going on.
Great, thanks, Bruce.
Thank you, Bruce.
Appreciate that. Good call, Dana. Thanks, guys, for coming here today. We appreciate it. Thanks for being here. Okay, great. Moving on to the next item on our presentation section, isn't quite a presentation, more of an informative item and a receiving file for the council, but I will be unable to attend the May 18th City Council meeting, because I will be attending a conference of the World Cultural Forum in Taihu, China, presenting a paper on that, and just wanted to keep the council informed of that. Are there any thoughts or questions on that?
Do you need help?
Probably. Okay, great. We'll move on now to the non-agenda public comment portion.
Just one thing on that. Would you share the paper that you present with the council?
I would be happy to. You bet. Thanks. Thanks, Dana. Appreciate it. And I think the abstract is included right now. Not that I'm a big procrastinator, but I haven't written the paper yet, but I'm working on it.
If ever.
All right, moving on now to the non-agenda public comment section of the agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to speak on an issue that's not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes per speaker. If there are members of the public that wish to speak, they should come forward at this Come on up. Please state your name and your city of residence, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Yes, sir. My name is Steve Finger. I live over in Palm Desert. It's good to see you, Mr. Mayor.
Steve, move your microphone a little closer to your mouth there, so we can hear you.
Can you all hear me?
Great.
Good. I would like to draw your attention, and have you consider, and then oppose, the provisions of the National Defense Authorization Act that can have your citizens arrested without due process and have them detained indefinitely. It's an important issue. It's not just important to me, it's important to citizens across the country. This is the first time ever, last year, that Congress has ever enacted something that would allow federal agents to come and arrest citizens. And across this nation, more than 20 states have considered legislation for non-compliance with that federal law, actively to non-comply with that law. In fact, in some of those states, if a federal agent comes in to enforce the law, the states are saying that that officer can be arrested, can be charged with a crime, can be imprisoned, and can be fined. In fact, if you may be aware, our own state legislature has done that, and is considering in just a few days, on April 9th, a hearing on AB 351, which is the California Liberty Preservation Act. And it too suggests that, that if a federal agent comes in to enforce such a law against your citizens, against the citizens of California, that that officer, that enforcement agent, can be arrested, can be charged, can be imprisoned. It is that serious. And many, many citizens in this country have no idea. They are thinking that they are living under the Constitution of the United States, where they have the right, as I am enjoying right now, to speak up without thought that they might be arrested. Now, this particular arrest, under this particular act of Congress, means that if the military police were to arrest me, and that is under the umbrella of my being affiliated with a terrorist organization or such, and that definition is up to them, I could be carted away. I do not have the right to a speedy trial. I don't have to be charged in order to be detained, and that would be my fate. It's very un-American. And I want you to be aware of it, and like I said, your own state legislature is considering this under a hearing, and it's very important, particularly at this moment, that you understand that, because I know that you do have an agenda item later that talks about a provision of allowing the federal government to fly through your town. So I'll address that later. I thank you so much for the time now.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Thanks for being here today. Are there any other members of the public that wish to speak during the non-agenda public comment period? Good afternoon. Please state your name and your city of residence.
Lou Stewart from Palm Springs. Good afternoon, council. I want to applaud you for your progressive vision of dealing with new technologies that are coming along. And I'm speaking in particular about the proposed ordinance on drones in your city. However, I'm not sure that the wording of it has been completely considered. I'm not sure who actually brought it forward, but in reading through it, I don't see any real benefit to the citizens. Well, I'm not going to be here, unfortunately, at the time of the agenda item, or I would speak to it at that time.
Thank you.
It just seems to me that the whole point of the ordinance that you're introducing is the exemptions, and that is giving a carte blanche for groups that may or may not represent the best interests of the citizens of Rancher Mirage to be surveilled. In fact, by giving carte blanche to these agencies to come in without any kind of an oversight board, or any kind of review by your own local law enforcement agencies, you're inviting the same kind of trouble that we're seeing with drones around the world right now, and with the violations of the Fourth Amendment under the NDAA, which Mr. Finger just spoke to. I would ask that you table this ordinance today and put more thought into oversight here at a local thing. I'm not asking for a warrant, per se, but certainly more than a written request if someone wants to come in with surveillance. And to have somebody, maybe just the council, be here to review those requests, and then to review the actual surveillance afterwards and determine whether it was lawful and constitutional. Thank you.
Thanks, Lou. Appreciate it. Very good points. Any other member of the public wish to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, great. Seeing none, we will now move on to city council and board comments. Who would like to go first today?
I'll be happy to, Mr. Mayor.
Great.
One of the things that the city prides itself upon is that we treat all of the residents equally, irrespective of their economic circumstances. The City of Rancher Mirage Housing Authority is an active promoter and a strong proponent of affordable housing in our community. The responsibility to provide below-market affordable housing opportunities and assist economically challenged property owners is one that we embrace. We take great pride in the four active affordable housing properties, which total 220 units within the city. Parkview Villas is an 82-unit property located on San Jacinto Drive, adjacent to Whitewater Park, and it's in walking distance to the river. The property offers one- and two-bedroom units. It's a stone's throw away from San Jacinto Villas. This beautiful property was opened in 2011, and it's quite attractive if you ever drive or walk by it. This consists of 82 one- and two-bedroom units. The Santa Rosa Villas is located merely feet away from Highway 111, and it offers 33 two-bedroom residences and a block away from the river. Whispering Waters is another project that was once a vacation retreat, and this was redeveloped and consists of 30 one-bedroom units. All of these properties offer a variety of resort-style amenities that include clubhouses with televisions, a full kitchen for recreational purposes, or meetings. The park-like setting also provides pools, hot tubs, and outdoor grills. In addition to the units being offered, and this is the area which I think we are so proud, of having rates below market, residents can also take advantage of a prescription rent credit offered by the Housing Authority. Through this program, residents can lower their monthly rent by up to $100 based upon the previous year's out-of-pocket medical expenses. The Housing Authority also provides a cab voucher, allowing residents to travel via cab at discounted rates. Just a terrific thing for people that cannot afford to own an automobile or to travel in a more luxurious style. Last, but certainly not least, the Housing Authority funds the home improvement program, providing homeowners with certain income categories with financial assistance on home repairs and necessary improvements. So much of this is unknown, but so much of it is important to our residents. This program has $150,000 annual budget and has helped hundreds of Rancher Mirage residents with repairs that they otherwise would not be able to make. I can tell you from a personal standpoint, this particular program gives me great pride to know that everyone is treated equally irrespective of their economic circumstances. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Ted. How wonderful. Appreciate that. Richard?
Thank you, Mayor. The city's cultural commission is pleased to present an incomparable concert with Tierney Sutton on Sunday, April 14th. That's Sunday after next, at the Annenberg Center for Health Sciences at the Eisenhower Medical Center. Tierney Sutton recently has had a couple of concerts in the desert, and they've both been sellouts, and she is recognized as being one of the top jazz singers in the country. So we recommend that if you're interested in getting tickets, you get them early, and you can purchase them online at ranchermirageca.gov. That's ranchermirageca.gov. Or you can contact City Hall- Or you can contact City Hall, and they can help you obtain tickets. Remember, that's April 14th. That's a week from Sunday at 3:00 PM at the Annenberg Center, and it's a great venue, 350 great seats, and I'm sure those of you who have not seen Tierney Sutton before will really enjoy it. So, get out, get your tickets, and have a great Sunday afternoon. Brought to you by the City of Rancho Mirage Cultural Commission.
Thank you, Richard. Iris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one brief... Thank you. One brief reminder for people who are in the midst or are thinking about doing some spring cleaning. Rancho Mirage has a wonderful pre-service, and we pick up bulky items, and they will be picked up at your homes from Bertech Waste and Recycling Company. They will come to your home, they'll pick up appliances, furniture, mattresses, televisions, carpets, and large tree items and tree limbs, but they will not pick up any tires, hazardous items, engines, car parts, building materials, or bagged household trash. A resident must have an individual residential account to make use of this service, and residents may put up to four bulky items for any one pickup, and just put it out on your curbside, and they will be glad to pick it up. All you need to do is call Bertech at least 48 hours in advance of your regularly scheduled trash day, and schedule that with them, that they will definitely plan to pick up your heavy items. And if you have hazardous items that you'd like to dispose of, we also have a contract with a company for that. They will also pick up items at your home. Their number is 800-449-7587, 1-800-449-7587. And the telephone number of Bertech Waste Management is 760-340-2113. So, for anyone who has thought about doing some spring cleaning, now is the time, and we'll be glad to help you out with any of the bulky items that you can't dispose of on your own. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thanks, Iris. Appreciate that. Dana?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to have JJ from Bandits Resorts bring us Chanel.
Yeah.
Well, nice to see you again, JJ. And what have we here?
This is Chanel. She's a four-month-old rottweiler mix puppy. We saved her from the Coachella Valley Animal Campus on our No Kill Mission, and she's available for adoption.
Well, you and I know that there's already somebody in the crowd who saw Chanel and put in dibs on Chanel, and Chanel's not going to be here or be available after half an hour from now. And I'm wondering if you could tell us about some of the other pets that you have at your shelter that are every bit as charming and deserving as Chanel. And let me hold it while you're talking.
We have Bee Gees, who's a four-month-old terrier mix. Cameron, who's a year-and-a-half beagle. Gaia, who's a two-and-a-half-month-old pit bull. Duffy, who's a year-and-a-half-old cattle dog. Duffy's great with kids. He needs a yard to play. We're trying to pursue a home for Duffy, as our foster home isn't the best for him. He needs a yard to run. You can see all of our dogs at banditsresort.org. That's banditsresort.org. Or if you're on Facebook, you can look us up on Facebook under Bandits Resort Animal Rescue.
And the telephone?
Telephone number is 760-285-9532, 760-285-9532.
Well, JJ, I got to tell you, this is one fine pooch, just like the other pooch you brought to us a couple of weeks ago. And we just hope that people will remember Bandits Resort in Desert Hot Springs and avail themselves of the opportunity of visiting your organization to find a dog every bit as deserving, wonderful as Chanel. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And while I'm here, today is a doubleheader, so to speak. We have Tom Snyder from Animal Samaritans. If you'd come up, Tom. We have a little pup by the name of Ruby, I think it is. Why don't you tell us about Ruby and about Animal Samaritans?
Sure. Thank you so much.
I want you to hold this.
It's a deal.
Careful.
Careful. She might try to clean your ears. She's very affectionate. She's actually just about three years old. She is a Chihuahua mix. She's one of several dogs we have at our No Kill Shelter. Great to see JJ here. It's just a reminder of how many homeless animals we have in our desert community. Good to have another resource. We at Animal Samaritans, we rescue over 100 dogs and cats from our public shelters every month. So, Ruby is an example of that. It's one of our programs, our Adoption Alliance Program with the Riverside County Animal Shelter at the Animal Campus in Thousand Palms. Previous speaker mentioned that April is Prevent Child Abuse Month. It is also Prevent Animal Cruelty Month. A reminder that our animals are just like family. Many of us consider them as children, and it's important if you suspect any form of abuse, and that can not just be physical signs, tethering, more than three hours is actually considered against the law. Signs of neglect, if you notice a dog or cat in the neighborhood, if somebody's pet is...seems underfed, and its bones are showing, or there's a gaping wound, and you notice it week after week, that's a sign of abuse by neglect. That's our responsibility to take care of our four-legged kids. So, if you're interested in Ruby, she's a real sweetheart. She gets along with other dogs, great with people. She's been microchipped. She's been fixed. She's current on her vaccinations.
And your phone number is?
Our phone number at Animal Samaritans, 760-343-3477. Extension two for the No Kill Shelter, extension three for our full-service, state-of-the-art veterinary clinic.
Well, great, Tom. I hope somebody takes Ruby home quickly. Very loving pup. And let me remind everybody that in Rancho Mirage, we pick up the first $100 toward the adoption fee of any of the dogs saved from the shelters, and we urge you to avail yourself of adoption and our opportunity to reimburse you.
Great. Thanks, Dana. Anything else on your end today?
No.
Okay, great. I just have one item. I was just sort of reminded today, in preparation for the meeting, one of the consent calendar items is dealing with appointments to the Emergency Preparedness Commission, and I was remembering an ordinance that we updated here just a while ago, which had succession planning included in it, which essentially meant each of us as members of the council would identify various members of the public who, if we were incapacitated, or the unthinkable happened in an earthquake or a natural disaster, that there would be someone who would take our place on the council in the interim. And we've never implemented that. So, I'm thinking perhaps we might, Randy, want to agendize that in a meeting or two coming up. Richard, maybe you can decide when the best time is for that. But we should all be thinking about who we wish to name as folks to replace ourselves if we are not able to be leaders in the event of an emergency. So, little flag here, if we could put that on the list of things to circle back around to. Okay, that concludes our city council comments. We'll move on now to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 21st. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A motion and a second. Minutes are approved unanimously. Move on now to the consent calendar. This is the time in our agenda, which we approve a consent calendar, which contains items that are routine in nature and may be approved in one blanket motion upon unanimous consent. Any member of the city council, the board, or the public may request a consent item be discussed separately and voted on separately, and such a request should be made of the mayor at this time. I understand, Randy, that there might have been one item that the staff wanted to pull. Are we going to move forward with that today?
No, I think we're okay.
We're okay. Great. All right. Any member of the public wish to pull an item from the consent calendar for separate discussion? Okay, we're talking right now about the consent calendar. So, we will discuss item number 10 separately, Steve, so no problem at all. We'll have a special time for just that item. No problem. All right, great. So, seeing none, Randy, why don't you go ahead and walk us through the consent calendar items today?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Good afternoon. Item number one on your consent calendar is to waive the full reading of the resolutions and ordinances that are introduced pursuant to your agenda today. Item number two on your agenda is the levy of special assessments for Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District Number 8701. This district was formed in 1987. There are three requests that the council adopt the resolutions that would initiate the proceedings, declare its intent to levy the annual assessment, and then three is a resolution for preliminary approval of the engineer's annual levy report. The public hearing would be scheduled for this, tentatively scheduled on May 16, 2013, and I believe that most of the assessments are going down in the four or five districts that we have, primarily because we've gone to drought-tolerant landscaping, and that will save the residents money over time and the city maintenance costs over time. Item number three on your agenda, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, is to consider filling three vacancies, two on the Emergency Preparedness Commission and one on the Rancho Mirage Public Library Foundation Board. So, the request is confirmation of Councilmember Kite's nomination of Mary Levine to the Emergency Preparedness Commission, Councilmember Wiles, two nominations of Gloria Corngold and Richard Keller to the Emergency Preparedness Commission, and Councilmember Smotrich's nomination of Diane Sagan to the Rancho Mirage Public Library Foundation. Item number four on your agenda is approval of a city-county road maintenance agreement. Bruce Harry, Public Works Director, did a great job on this. This was fulfilling a condition of approval of the Local Agency Formation Commission on an annexation that we refer to as the Lazar Annexation, because there is portions of the county roadway that go through the city, and so there's an agreement between the city and the county on a joint maintenance contract. Once that's approved, Lafco will finalize that annexation. Item number five on your agenda is approval of the Professional Services Agreement with Gallagher Benefit Services. This is the consultant, also known as Fox Lawson, that is doing the classification, comprehensive employee classification study for the city. Item number six on your agenda are the contracts and related purchase orders, and then item number seven are demands, and we're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy. Does any member of the council or board have a question for the staff at this time on any of these items?
Mr. Mayor, just a correction. There was a typo. The name is Heller, not Keller, as the appointee on the Emergency Preparedness Commission.
Richard Heller. Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. Richard?
Yes, thank you. Randy, could you clarify on item number five, the waivers that were requested?
I'm going to ask Gloria or Steve Q. to answer that question, please.
Mayor, city council, the waiver is relative to giving the city a 30-day notice of cancellation, which is required by the contract. In this situation, they will not be providing a timeframe in which to provide cancellation notice. The state does require a 10-day notice to be issued.
What specifically are you referencing as far as cancellation?
This would be for the general auto workers' comp professional liability policies. If the consultant's insurance were to be canceled for any reason, non-payment, et cetera, they would be required in accordance with the contract at this time to give the city a 30-day notice.
And we have no objection to it from my perspective, because 10 days' notice in this particular instance would be sufficient.
It's actually more restrictive, in fact.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, great. Any other comments on the consent calendar?
Okay, great. Seeing none, could I please have...oh, sorry. Does any member of the public have any comments or questions on the consent calendar?
All right, seeing none, could I please have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
It's approved.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Please vote. And the consent calendar is approved unanimously. All right, we'll move on now to the action items, beginning with item number eight. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'll turn this over to Bill Oppenheim, the city's facilities manager, to talk to you about park use restriction ordinances. Bill?
Good afternoon, Mayor, and council members. What we're resenting to you is a change in the ordinance establishing restrictions for our park use. Over the past few years, we had a basic guidelines for use of the park, but people seem to find ways of getting around usage. Some of the items, problems we've had is people using the tennis courts to play soccer while wearing cleats on their shoes, tearing up the turf, riding motorcycles or whatever. So, what we're trying to do in the ordinance change is to specify what activities are allowed in the park and what's not allowed. This allows our code folks and our police department to enforce these regulations, and we can fine people for abusing the park, and it protects our facilities. We're looking forward down line, for we know we're having an expansion of the park, that these ordinance will be in place and we'll be able to protect our parks. Additionally, within the ordinance, we're establishing some new guidelines for our use of the park as for our permitting. One of the things we've seen happen in the past is as activities grow in size and the use of the park, we have to provide more staff time for either cleaning up the park, providing security, providing custodial services, or actually have staff members at the park during their activities. Currently, we have no way of recovering those costs. So, we've established a procedure in the permitting process that the user will put up a deposit, and based on what is needed, we'll draw against that deposit to cover our staff's time. Now, any of the provisions within the ordinance, for example, we're covering things like sound, so if people don't put loud sound systems in, we prohibit the use of the park for commercial purposes. A lot of these provisions, we as a city can exempt ourselves. For example, when we have our art affair, we know we have commercial vendors there. So, this gives us a lot of flexibility. In the long term, we are hoping this will protect our park and our assets.
Thanks, Bill. Appreciate that. I did have one question on this, and that is the use of alcoholic beverages. Not that I'm in favor of public drunkenness or people getting wasted at Whitewater Park, but are we maybe going a little too far here? If you want to have a barbecue on Father's Day and you got a beer or something like that, at our own art affair, we sell beer and wine. Are we maybe going a little too far by restricting alcoholic beverages in totality in the park? And is that really practical?
I think we're more looking at trying to prohibit the selling of alcoholic beverages. I agree with you. People have barbecues, we really can't, but it does give us an avenue if people are getting out of control or overusing their alcohol beverages in the park. It allows either our code or our police department to come in and enforce the ordinance. I don't think we'd see somebody with one beer drinking a beer or a small party. We'd do anything about it, but this prohibits large occasions.
Well, and I appreciate that, and I would agree with you on that, but unfortunately, the way we have this written here is it's just exempt, carte blanche, not a single sip of beer or anything like that, and I'm just not sure that that's really practical. And I would think that, Steve, don't we have laws that govern public drunkenness or things along those lines? So, I'm not really in support of that one particular part of it. I just think that may be impractical, and if we aren't intending to enforce it, then we shouldn't include it in the ordinance in the first place.
Let me try...
Mr. Mayor? Let me just add, I agree with what Mayor Heinz has said. You can't have a provision that says you can't do something, and we're saying upfront that we're not going to enforce it. And perhaps it would be helpful to pass all of this excluding the section on alcoholic beverages, with that to be addressed with separate language that our city manager thinks conforms with our intent and with state law, and deal with that one provision later. conforms with our intent and with state law, and deal with that one provision later.
You use terms like personal consumption or something like that.
Some modest, some way of referencing.
Conforms with public drunkenness laws or something along those lines. So, yeah.
Also, Mr. Mayor, to answer your question about the art affair and stuff, under Section P. on page 8-9, it provides exceptions to the use restrictions, and it allows the city to waive and modify by the city any sponsored events that we have. So the city has through its permitting process, through special events, to waive certain things. Let's say we have a group there that wants to bring in alcohol. It goes through our special event process, and we find it okay to do what they're doing. We will permit them to do that, and that falls under this exception rule. But I understand your other point.
Yeah, I'm talking about barbecues in the picnic area, really.
But our city events are exempt through our permitting process from selling alcohol.
Sure, sure, sure. That makes sense. Okay, good. But I still think that this particular piece of it goes a little too far with regards to just personal consumption. If you're having a barbecue with friends, you should be able to crack open a can of Coors Light and not have to worry about the city coming down on you.
So the proposal is just to eliminate this provision and just rely on state law with respect to public drunkenness?
Well, what does the state law say?
That we will determine.
Yeah, how about we come back and we'll study it and bring back some revised language that allows?
Either revised language or revision, suggested revision, just total elimination because state law is adequate or whatever. We can't make that decision here and now.
So do you want to, if you introduce this, just take it out for now?
Yeah, because I think many of the other things that Bill identified, like cleats and the tennis courts, we need to address that right now. I don't think we should wait on that. So I would support Councilmember Hobart's suggestion that we move forward with approving this with the elimination of the paragraph or sections related to alcoholic beverages.
I'd like to suggest also one other modification at page 8-7, having to do with Section 8-H, I should say, having to do with amplified sound. I think that the last line, the underscored portion, should say unless pre-approved by the city, and insert the word "pre" in front of "approved." And there's one other I'd like to ask.
Real quick, before you leave that one, when I read this, I thought it meant things like, you know, bringing in speakers with microphones, that sort of thing. We're not necessarily talking about if somebody has a small radio. Again, if you're in the context of a small, little family barbecue, if you want to place the radio while you're listening, we're not intending to ban that type of behavior, right?
No.
That's right, Mayor. We're looking at the large commercial sounds coming in, annoying everybody else.
Amplified sound. Right, right, right. Okay, thanks. Thanks for the, okay, sorry, Dana.
And the other, I'm trying to find the language that we have at page 8-3 under skateboarding and roller skating. If I could find the exact same language here in the ordinance, but I thought that it would be helpful if we added after the word "purpose," comma, "if any." On skateboarding and, okay.
That's 8-7?
I got it.
Item 8-3, item number?
Page 8-8, item K., paragraph K., just add the words "if any," so we don't lock ourselves into the argument that somebody might have that we have provided or should provide or have committed to provide skateboarding and roller skating areas. Hopefully, we will have that sort of thing, but I think if we just say "if any," leaves us open.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on that item. Bill? On the description of the skateboarding and roller skating item that Dana just brought up, it says this shall not be allowed except in places designated for such purposes. Do we have any purpose, any places that are designated at this point?
That's my point.
At this time, we do not.
And that's my point.
Just like Councilman Hobart mentioned, we could put "if any," and at some future point, if we designate something, it'd be allowed.
Have we had complaints about the use of some of our facilities by roller skaters?
More so on the skateboarders, specifically at Whitewater. They'll try to use the tennis courts, the basketball courts. They'll put up, they'll jump over the tables. They'll pull the tables out on the basketball court and make ramps on them. That's why, one of the reasons why we stake down most of the tables, so they can't be moved. They've used the area where we have the flags. We have that raised wall there. They'll go, if it was a flat surface, they can get their skateboards on, they'll try to use it.
Thank you. So I would move those two amendments.
Great.
I just want to point out one legal issue. One of the reasons why we are proposing some of these restrictions is for the purpose of informing the public that if you engage in these kind of activities, it may result in personal injury. And so that provides us with an additional affirmative defense in the event somebody gets harmed by doing something they're not supposed to be doing.
Makes sense, yeah. Okay, any other questions or comments? Does any member of the public wish to ask any questions or make comments on this particular item on the action agenda? Okay, seeing none, Councilmember Hobart, could I ask you to maybe take a stab at a motion there?
Sure, I'd move that the council adopt the attached ordinance as amended, establishing additional restrictions on the use of the city's parks and other recreation facilities.
Thank you.
Second?
I have a motion and a second by Councilmember Wiles. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, please vote. And that motion passes unanimously. We'll move on now to item number nine on the agenda. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll turn this over to the city attorney, Steve Quintanilla, regarding regulatory ordinances for cannabis dispensaries.
So as everybody knows, the city of Ranch Mirage currently has a ban on marijuana dispensaries. And marijuana dispensaries are essentially the storefronts for collectives and cooperatives that cultivate and distribute medical marijuana. There's been a lot of legal debate and legal wrangling over this issue, and currently, the law is in the favor of the city. Basically, cities can ban them. However, the California Supreme Court has taken up the case involving the city of Riverside, which also has a ban very similar to Ranch Mirage's, and we're anticipating a decision by no later than May 6 of this year. What we're proposing here is that we, that the city council adopt both an urgency ordinance and just a regular ordinance that essentially regulates medical marijuana dispensaries in the event we do have to permit them. I'd like to point out that the ordinances that you have currently before you are the ones that fall under our business regulations. There is another ordinance that we're going to bring back to you, but it has to go through Planning Commission. And that particular ordinance identifies where medical marijuana dispensaries may be located, and basically, it limits it to just one within the city, because we base it on population. So that will be coming forward. However, once again, in the event the ruling goes the other way and bans bans, we will have to permit a medical marijuana dispensary. And what I would like to do, just for the record, is just go through the provisions, since we haven't reviewed these provisions since 2010. But here are the provisions that would be in place, regulatory provisions. The dispensaries will be required to obtain a regulatory permit from the city manager. And there's another, a number of, there's a lot of information that needs to be included in the application. They'd be required to have security cameras installed on an ongoing matter with at least 240 concurrent hours of recorded documentation. Dispensaries will have to maintain an alarm system. All the cannabis would have to be secured. All the employees, independent contractors, and volunteers will have to undergo a background check. Grounds for denial of the permit will be clearly set forth in the ordinance. The city manager may impose additional reasonable terms and conditions on the operations of a dispensary. They will have to, dispensaries have to comply with all state laws and regulations. They will only be allowed to be open before, between 9:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m., seven days per week. The patient's records must be made available to the city manager for review upon demand. Somebody had raised the issue as to whether or not this would violate HIPAA. And in the case of California, since it's a state law and the federal government doesn't recognize medical marijuana, there would not be a problem with that particular issue?
Steve, what is HIPAA?
It's the, oh, God, you asked me that. It's a, yeah, it's a Health Information Privacy Act, yes. Where, for instance, your physician cannot just tell the media, you know, what your illness is or what sort of prescriptions you're taking. See, dispensaries will have to provide a separate reception and distribution areas, and they both have to be, have self-securing doors that can only be opened by the dispensary personnel. They may not maintain over $200 in cash reserves. Recently, we had a dispensary in Cathedral City that was robbed of $70,000. I don't know why they have that much money there. But they'll have to pay all applicable sales taxes and maintain an electronic point of sale system. They will not, nobody would be permitted to consume cannabis at the site. They have to have signage that would be viewable from the exterior of the dispensary. No alcohol will be allowed. All the windows and entrances shall not be obstructed. They're going to have to have proper ventilation, so the odor doesn't go outside or to adjacent offices. No minors will be permitted. Doctor services may not be provided on the premises, and they may be subject to administrative inspections without notice by the city. And if there's any violations of any of these regulations, the city can declare them to be public nuisances, which will allow us to shut them down. And they will be subject to administrative fines of $1,000 per violation per day, and they may be subject to criminal misdemeanor violation as well, if they violate our municipal code provisions. So those are the regulatory provisions that would be put into effect in the event we can no longer ban them. So it's my recommendation that the council introduce the urgency ordinance, which will allow this ordinance to take effect immediately upon its introduction today, and to also adopt the regular ordinance, which would go in effect 30 days after the second reading. And the reason why I propose that you do both these ordinances, you adopt both these ordinances, is because by the time somebody sues us and gets us into court challenging the urgency ordinance, we'd have the regulatory, just the regular ordinance in effect at that time.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
May I ask you a couple of questions and make a recommendation or two?
You bet.
I would offer an amendment to the portion that describes the number of residents required. I would change, I would move to amend the proposed ordinance to refer to every 25,000 residents rather than every 20,000 residents or fraction thereof. One of the reasons that I make that suggestion is because there are developers currently planning development in Ranch Mirage, one of which, if it is completed, would already raise our residency from 17,500 approximately to over 20,000. And I think we should have some experience first with an ordinance that puts into position, if we are required to, one dispensary rather than opening the door to multiple dispensaries before we have some experience. So that would be one recommendation I would make.
Do you also think we should clarify that that is full-time residents? Because there are certainly some question marks.
Well, that's a good, that's a good point. I think that there is some, we know that our residency population increases to about 25,000 in season. So what do you suggest about that, Mr. City Attorney?
This would be a recommendation to come back with the zoning ordinance. That's where we have the number of dispensaries per population, and that's going through Planning Commission. So that's coming back, and that's coming to you in the future very soon.
But how do we express our intention now to elicit the?
What is a census? Does a census include full-time residents?
I think so. That would be what I would.
That's what I think it does. And that's what the 17.5 figure is generally referred to as.
Yes, right.
Because it wouldn't include the Canadians.
No, but I think full-time residents is a good suggestion to make, and that when we're talking about full-time residents, we're talking about 25,000 full-time residents or fraction thereof. The, let me?
Dana, what do you mean by fraction thereof?
In other words, if it exceeds 25,000, if our population went to 25,100, that would therefore entitle the city, that's the way to phrase it, to allow a second, not to allow it, to pretty much mandate it, because if we're doing it based on population, one dispensary for each 25,000. Then when you exceed 25,000, the argument is pretty clear that you're then in a position now where you would have to approve a second dispensary. I mean, that's the way I read that.
So don't we want to say that we will allow one for every 25,000 population?
Well, then what happens when we are at 30 or 35,000?
That falls in the next 25,000.
That's why, or fraction thereof. In other words, if you exceed 25,000, and that's what our objective is, is to have one, if this passes, one for each 25,000 people, full-time residents. Now, let's say we have 27,000 residents. Does that ordinance limiting it to one still prevail? I don't think so.
There would be two.
It would go to two. So that's why, as we used last time, or fraction thereof. In other words, anything over 25,000 adds the opportunity for the city to allow another one. That's all.
Can you tell me where in this particular ordinance are those numbers? I just, I couldn't find it. That's in the zoning.
That's in the zoning ordinance.
So that'll actually come back to as any other thing. It's not even in this piece of it right here.
But what we have to be a little bit careful of is we're talking about approving an approach that we want to make changes to, or at least I think we might want to.
Yeah, you want to provide the direction now.
We don't want to be on record as having approved 20,000 if it's really our intention to go to 25,000. So however that works out, a couple of other things that?
So if we get that direction from the council, we'll put that in the Planning Commission's draft ordinance.
Does anybody have a big issue with that? All right, sounds good.
Yep.
What, the, I had a question. I'm looking at page 9-3. It says, "The applicant and all employees, independent contractors, and volunteers must undergo a background check." And my question is, a background check to do what? Is it to provide us some information to restrict granting the dispensary license? They give you a background check, and let's say they're all members of the mafia. Now, what do we do with the background check? They provided it. We didn't say all members of the mafia would be ineligible.
Well, the general rule with background checks, any time a, any time a public agency conducts background checks, you can only deny a permit, the issuance of a permit, if the background check discloses that a person has committed a crime that is germane to the kind of business they want to conduct. So if somebody's convicted for drug crimes, we can deny the permit. But if they're convicted for driving recklessly?
Or spitting on a sidewalk.
Yeah, we could not deny the permit.
Should, my question is, should we make that then, just elaborate a little bit so that anybody who reads it will know what it is we're looking for in a background check?
Could that include a test for marijuana?
I can do that. I get what the message is. I can do that.
That include a test for marijuana?
Well, it would include, would include a conviction, I suspect, for illegal possession of marijuana sometime in the past.
I mean, we could just limit it to drug offenses.
We could do that.
Or felonies in general.
Yeah, I would say drug offenses or other serious felonies, or other felonies, so we don't have to argue over what's serious.
Yeah.
Drug offenses.
Or felonies within the past five years, probably.
Yeah.
I don't think, I think we're prohibited from not relaxing the restriction in that way.
Drug offenses and/or felonies within past five years.
Right.
These are convictions.
Yes.
Who does the background check?
Sheriff Department.
Live scan.
Okay. On page 9-4, the second to last bullet, it says, "An onsite community relations or staff person shall be available to resolve disputes with members of the public in order to avoid complaints to the city." Does that mean that we have to have a member of our staff at the dispensary all during the hours that it's open? Or somebody else that we have designated as a community relations officer or something?
No, it's, it's the dispensary that has to have a community relations person onsite.
So it should say the dispensary shall have.
Well, if you say that, or you say that, then the dispensary resolves, what kind of disputes are they going to resolve?
Let me read the language to you directly from the ordinance.
Okay.
It says, "Each dispensary shall provide the city manager or designate with the name, phone number, fax number, and email address of an onsite community relations or staff person or other representative to whom the city can provide notice if there are operating problems associated with the dispensary, or refer members of the public who may have any concerns or complaints regarding the operation of the dispensary."
Well, I think that language is fine. This summary is a little bit misleading as to that, but.
So all we're saying is that that person is the contact.
Right, it's the contact.
If there are any disputes.
Right.
And this is operating under the assumption that they're not violating the law, or the presumption that they won't violate the law.
Okay, let me just, one second. Let's see if I had any other. On page 9-12, we're now into the ordinance itself, paragraph I. Does, what kind, does this give us some type of police power? Is that what this is? When we say that evidence, to quote it, it says, "Evidence that the organization operating the dispensary is organized as a bona fide nonprofit cooperative affiliation, association, or collective of persons comprised exclusively and entirely of qualified patients and the primary caregivers of those patients..." Dot, dot, dot. Are we going to, who's, who's going to assess the so-called evidence?
Secretary of State's office. We just go online and look. Where they provide us with copies of their articles of incorporation. And this is, this is for application purposes. So if they don't produce that information, that proof, it should be really simple.
Okay.
Then we don't issue a permit. We're, we're just basically telling them, you have to be organized as set forth in the Attorney General guidelines.
So they have to come to us, the Attorney General's office is the one that makes the determination of whether there is adequate evidence that they're a bona fide nonprofit?
No, Secretary of State.
Okay.
It's like a regular nonprofit.
Okay, we don't have to.
We don't.
Okay, great. That's all I had.
Great, those are great suggestions. Anybody else?
Richard? Just a question for Steve. Steve, in, in dealing with these issues several years ago, didn't we establish a lot of these guidelines? And, and are we just reaffirming them or going back?
This is the same ordinance that was rejected in 2010. Because at that time, the case law didn't allow bans. And then the case law changed in a couple of months. So by the time we enacted the ban, the law was in our favor. And then later on, the law changed, and then our ban was struck down, then it changed it again and was in our favor. So these are, these regulations, you were on the subcommittee who developed these.
Yeah, I'm thinking, we've done this before.
Yes.
We did. That's why, the earlier one had the 20,000 residents.
Right, right.
Which we're suggesting in the form, I guess, of a recommendation to the Planning Commission, that the council is giving them guidance to go to 25,000.
And, and the same issue going before the Planning Commission, the zoning, we've discussed all that, too.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And the recommendation here is to provide direction to my office to amend that former draft ordinance to take it from one per, I think it was one per 20,000 to one per 25,000.
Right, thank you. I'm glad you clarified that.
Does any member of the public have any questions or comments on this item? All right, seeing none, it's okay. Mr. Hobart, I'd like you once again to take a stab at the motion on this.
Okay, a stab indeed. I move that the city council adopt the attached prophylactic regulatory ordinance for medical cannabis dispensaries as amended with respect to the number of residents or fractions thereof to, from 20 to 25,000, on both an urgency and non-urgency basis, and give all, and give direction as to what the city council deemed appropriate to the Planning Commission.
Great. I might also add that an urgency ordinance requires a four-fifths affirmative vote. So at least four of the five of us will need to approve this for the urgency ordinance to go into place.
Yeah, I prefer that you take separate votes.
Okay, great. So we'll vote first then on the regular, the non-urgency ordinance? Is that okay?
Just the motion as, as I stated it.
Yeah. All right, so we'll vote first then on the, the motion by Mr. Hobart, and a second, I think I heard from Mr. Kite, for the non-urgency basis, and then we'll come back to the urgency ordinance. So if there's no further comment, please vote. All right, and the non-urgency ordinance passes unanimously. We will now ask for a similar motion on the urgency ordinance.
Move adoption of the urgency ordinance, which requires four-fifths affirmative vote of the city council.
Second.
All right, a motion by Hobart, second by Smatrich. And that urgency ordinance also passes unanimously. All right, great. Moving on now to item number 10, Randy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's the first time, I think, in many years that we've used the term prophylactic in a council meeting, and now that's twice, once with the Citrus.
Four.
Of course. I counted them. Observation.
You counted four prophylactics? Good for you.
Five, six.
Luckily, we didn't ban it from park use.
So, so using that term in regards to an ordinance means what?
I think we should move on to item number 10.
Richard, I'll talk to you afterwards.
All right, so item number 10, Mr. Mayor, is a proposed ordinance that would prohibit drones, the flying of drones, in residential zones within the city, and with some exceptions. And I believe that this was something that you had worked with the city attorney on. Is that right? So do you want to talk about it?
Sure. Steve, do you want to go first, or do you want me to give a little background, or what are, how would you like to proceed?
Why don't you go ahead and give some background? Because I know that you have some recommendations to make some revisions.
Yeah, some slight modification. Certainly, this item has caught some attention, actually some national attention, on the article that was written by The Desert Sun, which was published in the USA Today. We were, or I was approached in an email from a neighbor who experienced while in their backyard, a remote-controlled aircraft that was being flown right over their backyard and hovering, and was quite disconcerting, as one can imagine, as it was really disturbing the, the quality of life and the privacy of those folks. And I promised that constituents that we would look into that, and brought that to the attention of the city attorney. We've used the term drone in this ordinance, and, you know, somewhat intentionally, but with some unintended consequences, because that term these days in the media conjures a lot of different images. And so we want to be very clear today what it is we are referring to and what we are not referring to. Certainly, many of us, when we think of drones, think of military-grade surveillance equipment, unmanned aerial vehicles, UAVs, Predators, those sorts of things that have been used in, in war zones. That, that was certainly not what these folks were experiencing. I have a, but I was very familiar with what they were experiencing, because I have one. My, my family, and I'll pass this around for the council to, to touch it and feel it, I was given this as a gift by my kids on my birthday this year, because I'm kind of a techno geek and like adult boy toys here, so.
Can you fly it down? Do you have some film of any of us in our backyards?
No, I don't. In fact, I'm so bad at flying it, most of the filming shows crashes around my backyard.
Can you fly it down here?
You know, I forgot to charge the battery last night. I kind of meant to, but it probably would have been a disaster anyway. So I'll pass this around, but just for the public to see, this is kind of what we are talking about in this particular incident. These are, these are very sophisticated pieces of technology, but they're toys. They're similar to remote-control helicopters, but the technology is getting so good now that many manufacturers are beginning to mount high-definition cameras onto these. And certainly, in the wrong hands, that can be a very direct violation of our neighbor's privacy. And that is what we're really here to discuss today and to take on. I asked the city attorney, Mr. Quintinha, to take a stab at, at an ordinance that would, would do one thing and one thing only, and that is work to make sure that we protect the privacy of individual citizens, which today is getting harder and harder and harder to protect with the internet and what we do being tracked by everybody and anybody. And, and certainly, one of the joys of living in the city of Rancho Mirage is, is the quietness, the quality of life, et cetera. And we do not want what is a really cool piece of technology, and I can promise you a lot of fun, to become something that is used to spy on neighbors or to, to violate one's privacy in their own residence. So that is our intent. This is meant today to be a beginning of a discussion. We may or may not be completely able to resolve this today. And certainly, we've already had a couple of guests who've brought some things to our attention that, that we've not necessarily considered, or maybe we have. But it is our goal to, to not be staunchy politicians who ban people's ability to have fun and enjoy small toys like this, but, but more to make sure that people's privacy is not violated. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to the city attorney to kind of let us know where we're at as a, as a beginning point.
What I, what I'd like to do is just go through the proposed provisions, and I do have some recommendations for, to revise them. Based on what I read in the paper, and based on some of the questions The Desert Sun asked, and just based on some questions I got asked by the public.
Steve, are there presently any ordinances in the area dealing on this subject?
No.
Okay.
There are no ordinances. In fact, when I was researching this, I didn't find one ordinance such as this adopted by any municipality in the United States. There was, what I stumbled across was a lot of, there was a lot of information about state legislatures, thinking about the idea of adopting regulations to deal with law enforcement's use and the military's use of drones, but not personal recreational drones. What I have in here is, I, you know, the definition of this, of drones in the, in the ordinance is defined, and I got this definition from a number of samples that I saw online. What I have right now is that a drone shall mean an unmanned aircraft that can fly under the control of a remote pilot or by a geographic positions system, GPS-guided autopilot mechanism. What I would add to this is that, because there's this assumption that drones all have cameras. Otherwise, you know, you'd be flying a model plane, I guess. So I would suggest that we include in here, or we insert after unmanned aircraft, equipped with a camera or video recording device.
Okay.
Well, what about those that don't have devices? Then we still want to have some control, don't we?
Well, then there's no privacy issue.
Well, sure, there is. If something flies into your backyard, whether it has a camera or not, it's invading your privacy.
And how do we know whether or not it has a camera onboard?
That's the problem.
That's the problem.
I mean, that's initially, when I put this together, I was thinking along those lines, because when I was asked by The Desert Sun about it, that all of these cameras apparently are really small.
Yes.
So we're not going to know.
Extremely small.
So that's, that's one suggestion. You guys can, you know, take that or leave it. The prohibition would be, you know, people would be prohibited from flying them in airspace below 400 feet, and 400 feet is the, the limit above which the FAA starts controlling airspace. So below 400 feet, we can control that area. And so, and I limited it to, I limited the prohibition to residentially zoned areas of the city, unless they're otherwise exempt. And the exemptions include the use of drones by any law enforcement agency, the city or state, federal government, for lawful purposes in a lawful manner. And I know that's a real sensitive issue for some people, particularly with respect to privacy, but I, I see that the law's developing on that pretty fast, and I expect that we'll be seeing some legislation that will require search warrants in connection with the use of these, you know, drones to inspect properties. And I, and I predict that we'll be seeing that pretty soon, because just, just recently, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled that a search warrant is required by a law enforcement agency that uses a drug-sniffing dog to walk up to a house on the, you know.
Walk up to the door.
Walk up to the door on the property.
Steve, how are, like, television news helicopters or police helicopters, you know, full, not, not small ones, but full-size ones regulated now with, with regards to that purpose? Do you have a sense of that?
No. They, they're probably regulated by the FAA.
It's over 400 feet.
Yeah, or they're over 400 feet, but just because of the type of device, it's regulated by the FAA. And this, I should point out that one of the reasons why I believe that the balloonist one, their case with respect to flying over some farm, is because there were no regulations there that prohibited balloonists from flying below 400 feet over anybody's private property. So it's, it's an unregulated area.
Mr. Mayor, I think what we're not trying to eliminate is the call from a constituent that I received today, who's a hobbyist.
Right.
And on the weekend, they fly their model planes, which they make or purchase at a hobby shop. Certainly not a camera. They go out into open areas. They don't fly it in a residential area. And they were concerned that we were going to prohibit these kinds of activities. And I said, no, what our concern is the invasion of privacy.
Right.
And that is not the case here. So I wanted to make certain that they knew that this was not going to be a prohibition on their activities.
Well, and even this device that I showed today, you have to initiate the camera. It doesn't necessarily automatically record or the camera comes on. You have to plug a USB device into it, so you can fly it in your backyard, for example, without recording any kind of video. And that, that was where I felt we were going, and I don't want to preempt too much where Steve is going with this, but I think personal use on one's own property or premise, or in a common area, if not governed by HOA, should not necessarily be restricted either, because there's a lot of folks who want to spend time having fun with their grandkids or their families, and, and that shouldn't necessarily be how far we go either, so.
Well, yeah, there are a lot of areas, too, where people fly model planes right down the residential street. So it's not necessarily out in the open all the time. You do get a lot of use, a lot of these small helicopters that can be remote-controlled. People take them outside and fly them in their front yard or in the street.
Sure. And as I showed, they're, they're toys, they're small. Where we cross the line and where we really get into an area where we're concerned about is when you begin to initiate the videotaping of someone else's person, their property, their, their home, their activities. That, that's what we're trying to accomplish here.
Let me address that issue, because I, I'm slightly different. I, I agree if, with what you're saying. If we could guarantee that a drone doesn't have a camera or other recording device, that's, that's one thing. But if somebody sends a drone over your, your house or mine, and it hovers there for 5, 10, 30 seconds, and we find out who had it, we go chase after them, and they say, hey, wait, said I could do it, there's no cam-
There's no camera. Take a look at it. They've taken the camera out, perhaps. You have no way of controlling what they've done with it, or maybe some kind of a recording device that sends the photographic material without even having a camera there, just to transmit it, television camera device with no film. I thought the way it was written was pretty good. I had some suggestions on a little bit of language. But what is the argument? That somebody can fly any kind of a plane. Doesn't it pose a hazard to people under it if the battery should die at that point in time or whatever propels it, whatever energy force propels it, and it comes down in your yard? These, as you've shown us, it's pretty big.
Yeah, that's why I was saying, you know, I think that perhaps what we would exempt or allow is to fly it over one's own property, but when it goes into another person's property line, that's perhaps where we say, no, you cannot.
I agree with that.
Kids fly kites in my neighborhood, and you could... With today's technology, they've got these cameras that surfers use, skateboarders use, mountain bikers, et cetera. You could very easily attach it to a kite or a hot air... or a helium balloon, like a birthday balloon, and accomplish the same thing. So I think you're right, Dana. I think it should be at least allowed on your own property or in a common area, but where we cross the line is when you intrude across the property line of another person. That might be a delineating point that we try to integrate.
And with respect to your own property, I think that there's some language that can accomplish what you're talking about because that's the way I feel about it as well. If you get up high enough over your own property, you've got a mighty good angle into property elsewhere. So if... We should probably have the dual provision. You can use it over your own property, but you cannot use it over your own property and take photograph or video of any other property nearby, adjacent or nearby.
I think that's great. And Steve also, I thought was very smart to put into this the allowance, for example, of realtors. I know that I've begun to see marketing videos of properties of realtors and vacation rental companies who are doing flyovers of the home that they're marketing, and it's fantastic. I mean, we should... We want to promote that. But when I start videotaping your house, that's where we have a problem. So I think where you're going is right on target there. No pun intended.
I'm wondering if, with the comments we've made and others that we may get from the public, if we could continue the matter to next meeting or next month and have Steve redraft it, taking into consideration these perspectives.
So that's great. I would definitely support that. So if I could maybe summarize what we've talked about, what we don't want, Steve, is to eliminate backyard fun or in common areas. I know I own a home in Tuscany, and that's actually where this event first occurred. Tuscany has long greenbelt areas where people go and can play soccer or football or fly kites. Actually, the kids fly kites in the neighborhood. I mean, those areas, unless regulated by the HOA itself, should also be open to what I would consider backyard fun. But where we cross the line is when, first of all, you trespass onto another person's property line, even if in the air. And certainly, when videotaping of other people's person or property is involved, that should not be allowed. And then I'm not quite sure what to do about the law enforcement or the federal piece of that. I just... I will be quite honest, Steve, and I'll give you a chance to speak here in just a second, and anyone else who wishes as well. I'm not exactly sure where that delineation is or how we address that particular issue. I'd love for some guidance on that.
I think that is more of a federal and state issue. So I would recommend that we not go down that path and let the state and the federal government take care of that issue because I know they're now being challenged, and there's lots of discussion across the country about regulating law enforcement's use and the military's use of drones in populated areas.
I agree. I think we should stay away from any other jurisdictional authority because it would preempt us no matter what.
If we did include something like that, and then it was somehow found to be... It was overturned by a court, that could, in fact, undo our entire ordinance. Is that right?
And one thing, Steve, on page 10-4, under prohibition, to the extent there is any viability of that paragraph left, I think that you should strike the word "or." And instead of residentially zoned areas, I would suggest you think in terms of residential areas. We may have vast acreage that's zoned residential, which would be entirely a wonderful place for them to fly.
That's right.
Yeah, no, that's actually a typo there. You're correct.
Okay, great.
400 feet.
I'll tell you, before we get too much further, it would be all right with you if I go ahead and let the members of the public speak on this as well. They may also have some input and ideas that we should really hear. So if you are interested, Cindy's got a couple of comment cards here. Please give your comment cards to the city clerk. All right, you have a number of requests to speak. Lou Stewart, are you still here? I think he had to leave. So we heard from him in the public comment area before, but we definitely, Lou, have your comments on record. All right, let's go ahead and bring Steve Finger up, please, Steve, and then I'll have Robert Terry on deck, and then C.E. Kraus next in line. If you would please, Steve Finger, next, please state your name and your city of residence.
Steve Finger, Palm Desert. I thank you for staying because I do have more to say. And I actually came to directly address this issue, but I thought that it was important to bring up the provisions of the NDA so that you knew that that exception in this ordinance is really my concern. By saying that, and as you have, common sense tells us that you're talking about toys. You're not talking about high-powered military attack vehicles. However, when you put in the exception there that law enforcement can use this, we know that law enforcement isn't going to go out to your greenbelt. They're not coming here to fly something up just 20 feet. They're not just having a good time. There's a reason that they're coming here to use that drone, vehicle, toy, item with a little cellphone camera or whatever. So somehow, I think, in order for this to be more perfect, and I know that's correct usage, and less flawed, that one exception has to go. You can't say that what we're talking about is toys, we're only talking about flying so high, we're not talking about thermal imaging and so on, except in the case of law enforcement.
Let me ask you a quick question, Steve. I don't know the answer. I'm just... I want your perspective on this. I know in the... There was a community that was having a pretty consistent issue with home burglaries, and there was a pattern. And ultimately, law enforcement used a police helicopter, and they were literally chasing somebody, and there was a video involved, et cetera, and they caught that person and they were arrested. Where do we draw the line between public safety and keeping us safe from criminals and violating a person's personal civil liberties and privacy by flying over their backyard and videotaping them? I mean, I just... I don't quite know the answer to that, but there would seem to be some balance there, wouldn't you think?
Well, I do. I appreciate you asking my opinion on it. We have established regulations about flyovers and helicopters and police cruisers and so on. We know they go into our neighborhood. We know they keep us safe. That's our intention of having a police force, and we respect that, and they respect our rights. They're not invading us. I mean, we trust them to do that. There is... There are laws that talk about in color of uniform and so on. What we're saying here is that when those devices get to a point where you might not be aware, they're stealth, they're not your helicopter that you hear above you, they're not spotlights, they're there, and you don't know it. That's what we're talking about. That's when, I think, it crosses the line, as you say. Then you, as a person, may not feel safe, which, under the amendments, you should. But when you have helicopters, like rescue vehicles and so on, then you have a... There's a different feel about it.
That's a good distinction. So what you're advocating for, then, is that particular exemption in this ordinance just be struck in general, which I kind of actually heard on the days as well, that perhaps we just don't want to tread into that area because it's not in our jurisdiction anyway and let other case law govern that piece of it, potentially?
Right. If you put the exception in...
Yeah, okay.
If you put the exception in, then I think you're opening the door. If instead, you leave what you have, that drones are to be used, and again, I agree with you, the term drones versus toys, at some point, you're going to hear that those two phrases that you used, lawful purpose in a lawful manner, that's where you're going to find that you lost control because you agreed to it, even though you may not have agreed to the law coming down the line.
Okay.
But if you put stipulations in there...
Got it.
Then whatever is passed later on a federal level or even a state level, you have a restriction.
Point well made.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here today, Steve. Okay, next, Robert Terry by Ms. Kraus.
Good evening, good afternoon. Bob Terry, I'm a small, organic farmer from outside of Desert Hot Springs, and I'm here for the same reason, and I'm glad that you're talking about dropping that wording, but I need to make a few comments regarding it. That exemption that you were talking about putting in, first off, being the first in the country, it's very important. It sets a precedent. It could be a Trojan horse. It's asking for abuse, and it is infringing on the Fourth Amendment, which I'd like to read into the record here. "It's the right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures, shall not be violated, and no warrant shall issued but upon probable cause, supported by the oath or affirmation in particularly describing the place to be searched and the persons or things to be seized. And this amendment was intended to create a constitutional buffer between U.S. citizens and the intimidating power of law enforcement." So if you had put that exemption in, you would have opened up a door or a loophole large enough to fly a 747 through, and it would not... We're not talking about the toys that you have. I think it is commendable that you're looking out for the privacy of your citizens. We all value our privacy, and we have to be careful not to open up a larger door that affects people not just here but in the rest of the country because it would be the first. I want to comment that I'm amazed at how civil a city council can be. I'm used to going in front of Desert Hot Springs City Council, and it's night and day. And one more comment before I leave. I want to invite you guys to listen to Kelly's Corner. I believe it'll be live tomorrow at 5:00 p.m. We will be talking about the Sentinel Power Plant and how it affects the entire valley, including you guys and your families.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
And I hope that by being here and hearing the conversation, you better understand our intent.
Yes, thank you.
I think our intent is the same. Appreciate that. I might add, perhaps just to clarify...
There's one lady there.
Yeah, yeah. Steve, what about on the subject of this ordinance? What if we called it something like the recreational drone privacy protection ordinance? Something along those lines?
I would hesitate in using the word recreational. Then that becomes a fight over whether it's recreational or not, whether it's bound by the ordinance or not bound by the ordinance.
So drone...
I'd say keep looking between now and the next meeting.
Yeah, let's come up with a subject or a title that makes it more clear because there's a perception clearly that we're actually doing the opposite of what we're trying to protect.
Residential zone, residential area, something.
Privacy or airborne privacy. Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, something like that.
Okay.
What I can do is I can come back with a section entitled title and a section entitled purpose.
Yeah, great. Perfect.
Have some suggestions or leave it just totally blank.
Maybe between now and the next meeting, the council members can individually make their recommendations to Steve on some buzzwords or some ideas so that our intent is more clear with this. That's great. Okay, just to Steve, not to each other, just to Steve. Ms. Kraus.
Well, then, oh, we have a...
Thanks a lot. Thank you. My name's Carolyn Kraus, and I'm from La Quinta.
Great, thanks.
I'd like to read some whereases, just to remind you of the laws, some of the laws. Whereas the Federal Aviation Administration's guidance on the use of drones as of 2013 provides that drone flights may not be conducted over urban or populated areas, heavily trafficked roads, or open-air assemblies of people, absent a convincing show that such operations can be conducted safely. Whereas persistent or ambient surveillance of the sort enabled by drones entails serious constitutional abuses of police authority by effectively circumventing the Fourth Amendment's longstanding requirements concerning warrants and due process. Whereas drones can be outfitted with supersensory technologies such as thermal imaging software and the capability to see through walls. Whereas drones are capable of hovering outside the windows of private dwellings to peer inside. Whereas drones can be outfitted with technologies such as license plate readers and Internet packet sniffing technology that enable pervasive surveillance without particularity circumventing the requirements of the Fourth Amendment. Whereas most drones send the data they obtain in open and unencrypted broadcasts that can be seen, that can be and have been intercepted by unintended recipients using common and inexpensive technology. Whereas drone control uplinks are vulnerable to both malicious and unintentional interference. Whereas local law enforcement agencies report over-inclusive suspicious behavior to national intelligence agencies and fusion centers. Whereas expanded law enforcement capabilities often invite mission creep and grow pervasive and entrenched. Whereas drones are largely unproven in American civilian airspace and have only seen widespread use in combat theaters, where they are the least safe class of aircraft currently in operation. Whereas an FAA official testified to Congress that Customs and Border Protection has reported 52.7 drone accidents per 100,000 hours of flight time, seven times the civilian aviation rate of 7.11 accidents per 100,000 hours. And whereas drones currently in production do not have the see-and-avoid capability of manned aircraft and drone collision avoidance systems seeking to mitigate this problem have thus far proven ineffective, therefore, I suggest, I'm a lot more radical than my colleagues, I suggest that they be banned completely from the area. I'm totally against drones. There's no need for them. We have plenty of toys, and I could go on, but I won't. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for being here today. Appreciate it. Are there any other members of the public that wish to comment on this item?
You know, just if there isn't...
Come on forward, please.
Oh, there is.
Sorry, one more. Go ahead. You just go ahead and come to the microphone, just state your name and your city of residence, please.
My name is Lloyd Holtkamp. I live in Rancho Mirage in the Magnesia Falls Cove area, where there's a large estate up there, which probably could be used for surveillance on their own property if they wanted to. But the thing I was thinking about when you were trying to narrow this down to drones that have photography capabilities is whether they also might have advertising capabilities, where they might be... It might be a larger-sized drone, but they may be pulling a flag or something behind advertising something that they want you to go to that's opening, or some other agency or commercial venture that may be flying in your neighborhood to encourage you to come to their new facility. So it starts getting really tricky when you're trying to anticipate what all you're going to allow, and then there's going to be a loophole.
Are you suggesting that advertisers would invade your privacy in order to try to sell more of their product, do you? I think that would...
I was thinking about that possibility when it came by. I was thinking about that possibility when it came by here, that I could have a banner going on that says one of the local real estate agencies, call so-and-so or whatever there.
I think you got a point.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lloyd, appreciate that. We do have one more request to speak, Jim Tomlin.
I'll set a three-minute timer in case I get carried away. My middle name is, you said Jim Tomlin, my middle name is Boke, and I mention that because if you Google Boke or Bing Boke, I'll be on the first page as artist of ideas. I live in Sky Valley, which is outside the city limits of Desert Hot Springs, so I'm from nowhere. Now, how did I get here? Well, I was looking at Twitter this morning, and there was this tweet from Desert Sun that said, "First law in California controlling this." And so that's how I, why I got in the car and came here. But one thing I didn't realize was going to happen is I came here, I came here and came down Bob Hope Drive, which is beautiful, and I made a right following the GPS onto Frank Sinatra Drive, which is spectacular. And you reach here, which is the most beautiful city council I've ever seen. So this is how you get to this beautiful spot to start a public conversation on this that you didn't think you were going to finish today. And I'm here because it got national, you got national for starting that conversation. Now, the particular law is under the section called Peace. But most of the discussion today has been about privacy. But in the article, the man also mentioned he heard this noise, I think, right? Wasn't that in the article? So the only thing that I would bring to this, because I've been in places that were beautiful that I was driven crazy by a noise. So, and I understand it's a complicated issue, I mean, you allow people to have some noise, but part of beauty is peace. And so if you have these, if this thing that has no camera hovers over your house, making a loud noise and bothering you, that's a problem. I understand if you just keep it off your problem, but it could still make noise. So the only thing I bring to this is that as you think about the privacy issue of these toys, also the peace of these, the noise part.
Good point. Thanks. Okay, any other, any other comments? About, everybody gets one shot. Anybody else on the council? All right, Steve, do you feel like you've got enough direction from the council to come back to us with something new?
Yes.
Great, fantastic. Well, it's been a very good and healthy discussion, and I really want to thank everybody for coming today and participating.
Set it to a date.
And this was a great starting point, so thanks so much. All right, we will continue this item, I think, let's see, we need to vote to continue this item. Could I have a motion to continue this item, please?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to continue item number 10, please vote.
So that will be the first meeting in May, since we're going to keep the next agenda clear.
Sure, not a problem. Okay, so we'll bring this back the first meeting in May. Please vote. All right, that motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to item number 11 on the regular agenda. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is a, a request for council discussion and direction to staff and potentially the Planning Commission on the renaming of Los Alamos Road between Dyna Shore Drive and Ramon Road. Mayor Hines had announced at the State of the City presentation a couple of weeks ago that he intended to ask the council to support a renaming of a street in honor of Rancho Mirage resident Carol Channing, singer, actress, and comedian. He requested it be placed on this upcoming agenda, which is why it's on the agenda today. The code section that addresses street names and street name changes, Rancho Mirage Municipal Code Section or Chapter 12, says that street name changes are subject to the review and approval by the Planning Commission, can be initiated by the city or by property owners that live along a street. If it's initiated by property owners, it would have to be, have support of 75% of the property owners that front on the affected streets, and then that the city would have to notify all affected property owners when the hearing is scheduled for the Planning Commission. So the mayor had suggested Los Alamos Road for Carol Channing, and there are no residents or businesses on the street today, although I think the gatehouse of Mayor Vista might use it as an address. It is a good street segment to consider renaming because it's disjointed from the other Los Alamos in the city. There's a Los Alamos Drive that's further to the south, and then Mission Hills Country Club, and then further to the north is Los Alamos Road. And I understand that does create some problems for some people that you can't get through, even though one is drive and one is road. So that is one, one thing to consider. Another thing to consider is that the east half of Los Alamos is in the unincorporated Riverside County area, it's not within the city limits, and it's also within the boundaries of the Agua Caliente Indian Reservation, and certainly I think they would need to be consulted if that is changed. And then also, Los Alamos would extend north of Ramon Road at some point in the future and probably provide access to significant, significant commercial development in the future. So those are things to, for you all to consider. And I've also heard the name Lucille Ball or Betty Ford considered potentially for a street name in the past, although we haven't looked at any specific streets. So anyhow, so we're looking really for direction from the council to staff on this issue.
Great, I will just open it up to council comments or thoughts on this.
Well, I do have a, a comment, and I think it would be lovely to name a street after Carol Channing. Unfortunately, from what I've understood, though, we have very few naming opportunities available to us at this point. I think it depends on whether or not new developments are formed and new streets are made, that we can have more streets available to us. But I think we have to be careful of making a decision today. I think we should go through the process of perhaps finding out how many streets we have available for naming opportunities. I think we should run it by the staff members and see what their take is on how we can arrange these things. But I think then we should think about all the different people that are out there that we could honor by naming streets after them. There are so many worthy people that we can honor, and as you said, Randy, to name a couple would be Lucille Ball, who has been our honorary mayor twice. We have Betty Ford, and I can think of no one more worthy than Betty Ford, actually. She has really put Rancho Mirage on the map with the Betty Ford Center, which is a beautiful place, it has helped countless individuals who have pulled, to pull their lives together and make their lives certainly more, more successful and, and get out of the drug way of life. I think we have the Annenberg's also, and I don't know, I, maybe there is a street named after Annenberg, I'm not familiar with it. But there are so many people also whose philanthropy is so great and whose contributions and generosity and good deeds are so amazing. People like Annette Block, who has just been a wonderful generous person in our city, Barbara and Jerry Keller, who have also been so, so involved with so many philanthropies. I think they should be considered also, and also Helene Galen, who has been so deserving, I think, of having her name considered as a possible street naming. So I think there are names out there and people out there that have given so much to our city and are still giving on a daily basis, so that before we make a decision today to go ahead and adopt the Carol Channing name for a street, I think that we should kind of put it off and do a little bit more investigation and research as to who out there we would find to be the most fitting individuals, and maybe perhaps even ask, do a, a survey and ask our residents if we're going to be naming streets, maybe their suggestions that they might have, or would they like to vote on who would be the most ideal name to be honored? Because it is a great honor, and we're only going to have so many streets available. So I think we need to be careful and, and select the right names.
Yeah, you know, when Frank Sinatra was named and Bob Hope Drive, those streets didn't have a lot of development on them at the time, and so there weren't a lot of people that were affected. And I had mentioned in the staff report, celebrities are one thing, but some people don't want to have to change all their personal information. And that's why I think it's important for us to keep that in mind or get it.
You know, there was a, an effort by Bill Marx about two or three years ago to change one of the streets where Harpo Marx had lived, and he asked me about, the same process that you were talking about. And he, I told him, I said, "Well, the, the big problem is," which is not Los Alamos, "the big problem is, the more people you have or businesses you have, they're all going to have to change their stationery, their business cards, all of the advertising, and it can be very expensive. And you can only do it with permission of, what is it, like 80 or 90%? Some very high percentage has to support it."
Right, you have to have at least 75% just to get the application.
Right. And I remember when Kay Ballard Lane was changed, she had to go from door to door to door on that little street, and she did get the permission. I, I, I think that, I, I don't know that we have to, how hard we have to look for new, new names beyond the handful that we can all think of, but maybe one of the things we could do to start this process, and I certainly think Carol Channing should be on that list very high up, along with, you know, the two that Randy indicated and perhaps others that, Annenberg, for example. Maybe we should have staff in the planning staff, have staff make a survey of streets that have potential and see if we, how many we've got, and that tells us essentially what our opportunities are. Remember, they also tried to change Date Palm in Cathedral City at one time, and that lasted as long as a drone made of lead would last. But I'm just droning on.
Do you have any comments or thoughts on this?
So what I would recommend, I think, I think these are very good comments, I just would encourage us to be proactive as opposed to reactive. The, the problem that we've identified is streets that are already populated with either businesses or residences become very difficult. And there just frankly isn't a lot more development to occur in Rancho Mirage. And I was approached by a number of friends of Carol Channing who wanted to, to do something special while she is still among us, and there's a big differentiator between her and some of the other names that have been floated. And, and we've all been with Carol recently, she's, she's clearly not in great health, and I think it would be incredibly meaningful to her while she is still with us to be able to pursue something like this. And it does not necessarily mean that to name Los Alamos after Carol Channing or any other street for that matter would preclude us from being able to move forward with a street after Lucille Ball or Betty Ford or anyone else. You know, one of the things that, that makes our town attractive and, and really gives a nod to our history is the many streets that are named after famous people who have lived here, Dyna Shore, Gerald Ford, Frank Sinatra, Bob Hope, for example. And it is good for our city's brand as well as a real honor for the folks that we name it after and their family members. I'm not opposed at all to the suggestions that have been made to study this, but I would ask us to hasten that study so that we might be able to honor somebody as wonderful as Carol Channing, who is an international star, while she's still with us. So the, the other thing that we might consider, and I have, do have a question, is what about, for example, in Section 19? We have identified in the specific plan, for example, large, the larger, what are we calling that, promenade?
Esplanade.
Esplanade, thank you, I can never remember that word. You know, perhaps we could pre-name that Lucille Ball way or something along the lines.
You could actually take an area like Section 19 and do all the streets representing people that have been important to Rancho Mirage.
Sure. So that may be a compromise that we could address, but what I would like to, to do is ask staff to, to move forward with what Councilmember Smotrich has suggested, and let's, let's do a quick analysis and survey. I, I think you guys can do that even off the top of your head, because I know when I first approached staff with this, they pretty quickly knew exactly where the opportunities lie. But I'm not sure we were looking at Section 19 or even Section 34, that's the other big parcel that's still really vacant right now, 24, Section 24. And that might be perhaps a good place for the Annenberg's because of its proximity to Sunnyland. So what I'd like to do is ask staff to take this and maybe come back to us with a, a more robust report that includes a map, and give us five or six opportunities that maybe we can address now and be a proactive council, because this only enhances what has already become a wonderful tradition in our city. Would that be amenable to everyone? Okay. Iris, is that okay with you, what's been suggested? Would that be okay?
Yes, to have staff review it and come up with some streets and some opportunities.
Great. Could we look at maybe the first meeting in May, Randy? Would that be possible to come back with those suggestions?
Yes, I think so. There really aren't many streets, you know, working the planning department for many years, there are not a lot of streets that wouldn't affect people that you could go out and change, but looking at future streets, I think, is a good way of doing it as well. Section 24 being a, a part of the reservation boundary, Richard Milanovich would be a good choice as well.
Not a bad idea.
Yes, absolutely.
That's great. Okay, good. So I think we've resolved this. There was really not an action on this item, was there?
No, it was direction.
Provide direction, so I think we've done that, and unless anybody else has any concern, I think we've fulfilled that. So let's move on now to item number 12. Item number 12, 13, and 14 are actually actions as the successor agency, if I'm not mistaken. Just scroll to that real quick. Yes, that's correct. So we will now take on items 12, 13, and 14, with the city council serving as the successor agency to the redevelopment agency.
12's been polled.
12's been polled.
That's right, well, we have polled 12, sorry, I did make it out to myself, so we'll move on to item number 13.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll turn this over to Kurt Watts, Development Services Director, for an explanation of the subject matter.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the city council. I'm addressing you today in your role as a successor agency to the former Rancho Mirage Redevelopment Agency, and after some introductory comments from me on this proposed 2013 refunding and bond redemption plan, I'll turn it over to our Finance Director, Isaiah Hagerman, for more specifics. As you know, following the statewide dissolution of redevelopment in California in 2012, the successor agency had approximately, and still has approximately, $156 million in remaining bonds outstanding, basically funds that need to be paid off over the remaining term of those bonds which run through the year 2035. This bond debt is currently scheduled to be retired in the future through semi-annual debt service payments using the funds that now come from Riverside County and that the city previously received as annual tax increment payments. Both principal and interest on those bond payments, the debt service, are approximately $13.2 million annually. The successor agency also has approximately $50.7 million in unspent bond proceeds, those are detailed in the staff report, and prior to the dissolution of redevelopment in California, the bond proceeds were expected to be used for completion of a variety of redevelopment projects within the city. The use of those bond proceeds has been in limbo as the various provisions of legislation related to dissolution of redevelopment, i.e. AB 26 and 1484, were interpreted and revised. Under the most recent legislation, AB 1484, following a receipt of a DOF, Department of Finance, finding of completion, which requires several steps to be completed before it can be issued, the successor agency is authorized to spend from bond issues completed prior to the year 2011. The expenditure of those excess bond proceeds may be proposed by the successor agency for approval by the state's Department of Finance. Successor agency staff has identified a number of projects which we believe meet the criteria set by the Department of Finance and AB 1484 for excess bond proceeds to be used for originally intended projects. Basically, the proposal before you that we would be discussing would basically deal with the use of bond proceeds for those projects as well as the balance of the funds being used to redeem bonds as part of a bond refunding. The specific projects which have been analyzed by staff are listed on Attachment C of your staff report, page 13-11 of the staff report. Staff's proposed plan is briefly summarized in the staff report as well as on page 13-9 or Attachment B. This is the area that Finance Director Isaiah Hagerman will describe in a little greater detail in his comments. Isaiah?
Thank you, Kurt. So what this plan does is it's estimated to reduce the overall debt service requirement by 38 million over the next 21 years of the remaining life of the debt. And the savings is, right now, the debt service is funded with property tax dollars that flow through the county. So by reducing the debt service requirement, those tax dollars will then be distributed to the various taxing agencies rather than being spent on debt service requirements. So right now, the successor agency, as previously indicated, has 156 million in bonded debt, and that's just the principal. Each year, it's about a 13.4 million debt service requirement of principal and interest. The successor agency is also holding on to 50.7 million in unspent bond proceeds. proceeds. So we're now reaching the point in the law to where we can use those bond proceeds. So this plan does two things: it takes a piece of those unspent bond proceeds and retires debt, and it also takes a piece of those unspent bond proceeds and uses them for capital projects in accordance with the bond indentures as they were originally issued. So, of that hundred and fifty-six million in bonded debt, there was a little over eighty million that was identified as eligible to be refinanced and also retired. So what this plan does is it takes that eighty million, and we're going to use twenty-six point five million of the unspent bond proceeds to retire debt, to basically pay down principal. And then the remaining amount of that eighty million, whatever's left over, is going to be refinanced at lower rates. So the combination of those two things is what's creating the tax savings of approximately thirty-eight million. The remaining bucket of the unspent bond proceeds, which is about twenty-four million dollars, is going to be spent on capital projects, and those capital projects are detailed in Attachment C. So this is a really good plan, it will benefit a lot of different entities, not just the city, because property tax dollars support many different taxing agencies. We are anticipating getting our notice of completion this month, which will allow us to continue with this plan. We are estimating that this plan should be finalized if we get approval to move forward today in the July timeframe. We took this item to the Finance Subcommittee on the thirteenth, and they endorsed staff's recommendation to bring this to the city council, acting as the successor agency for consideration and approval. And one thing I just want to note is, this refinancing does not extend the life of the debt. These savings are all captured within the original life of the debt, so that's why it's twenty-one years instead of the typical thirty that you see, because these bonds only have twenty-one years left, and this refinance will not affect the remaining life of those bonds. So at this point, the recommendation here is that the city council, acting for the successor agency, adopt the resolution approving the 2013 refunding and bond redemption plan outlined in this staff report, and direct successor agency staff to forward this item to the Oversight Board for consideration and action. And at this point, staff is available for questions.
Great, thanks, Isaiah, I appreciate it, very good report. Any questions for staff on this?
No, I think the Finance Department really did a good job in putting this package together, and in the long run, it really saved the city a lot of money. So it makes sense that this point, with interest rates where they are, to do the financing will not only recoup some money that we would normally pay out in the future, but will pay less in the future for the debt that we have outstanding.
I agree.
So I think it really makes sense, and I think we should refer this on for the next body to review it.
Does any member of the public have a question or comment on this item? Good seeing none. Richard, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, thank you. I'd like to recommend that the successor agency adopt Resolution Next in Order 2013 SA, approving the proposed 2013 refunding and bond redemption plan outlined in the staff report, and direct the successor agency staff to forward the item to the Oversight Board for consideration and action.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Councilmember Kite, and a second by Ted Wylen. Any further discussion? All right, please vote. All right, motion passes unanimously. Our last item today, item number fourteen, Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is also for successor agency consideration. This is, I'll turn this over to Randy Vegas in a minute, but I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. You can see that this is case number RA oh-four dash seven-three, so oh-four, this is the project that the city's been working on for the last almost ten years, one of the last actions of the city's redevelopment agency, utility undergrounding in residential neighborhoods, probably one of the most important projects that the RDA undertook. And there was an article recently in one of the public works journals that talked about the importance and safety of underground utilities, and had they had underground utilities in the Hurricane Sandy area, they wouldn't have had power loss for as long as they did. So this is something I think that's very positive on the part of the city and the RDA, and now the successor agency. Randy?
Great, thank you, Mr. Binder. Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers, and staff. It is exciting to formally announce that the undergrounding project is complete. As Mr. Binder mentioned, the project's going pretty close to ten years now. Before we get to the staff report, I have a quick PowerPoint presentation to recap basically where we've been and where we are now. The project was approved by the Redevelopment Agency Board back in July 2003. We developed the project team almost immediately and started the design plans. We've had three phases throughout this last ten years. The first phase was the neighborhood around the, excuse me, the Tamarisk Country Club that ran from August 2004 to April 2006. We moved on to the Magnesia Falls Cove area, that also included the White Sun neighborhood and Sandy Center Drive, that was from January 2005 to February 2008. And then the final project, which we're in right now, that we've wrapped up, and that ran from November 2008 to today. Funding for the project was redevelopment agency funds, as well as license tax funds. Total fund spent was twenty-five point two million. And then a little bit more of a breakdown of the three different phases. Tamarisk area, there were roughly four hundred properties that were affected, came in at the, project cost is six point four million. Magnesia Falls Cove area, that was about seven hundred, that was the largest of the three phases, seven hundred properties there at twelve million. And then this final phase, about two hundred properties were affected, six point eight million was the total cost. And there's a list of the different, the project areas, there's roughly fourteen project areas. I actually have a map on the next slide here that gives you a good idea of where the three phases were. Just for getting your bearings, the top road there is Gerald Ford, so this is like the southern part of the city. The Tamarisk phase is in blue, the final collective areas, that's in red there, and that's anywhere from a single property with maybe one or two poles clear up to the Mirage Cove Drive, Peterson Road area was probably the largest of these areas, and that was about fifty properties, and everything in between. And then down at the bottom of the screen, Magnesia Falls Cove area. And let's go ahead and, got some before and after shots. This is actually a picture of Councilmember Hobart, and actually, I believe you were mayor at that time, Mr. Hobart.
Yeah, actually, you know what, Randy, something we forgot to mention on the timeline, probably the most important, is that really Councilmember Hobart initiated this project back in 2000, and I think November of 2002. And that's how this whole thing really got started, benefited thousands of property owners in Ranch Mirage.
Absolutely. And there he is with our Director of Public Works, Mr. Bruce Harry, and then just a few days ago, 2013, same location, and there they are. Here's a couple of shots of the Tamarisk neighborhood, before and after, you can see the pole on the left with the transformers and the improvement on the right side there. And this area is just north of the Annaburg Estate, in the open field area, the east end of Cypress Lane. It's quite an improvement there. There's a property on Clancy Lane. There's a single property on Bob Hope Drive, just south of Country Club Drive. And then this is part of the phase that we just completed, the Mirage Cove Drive area, and that was, that's quite an improvement. And this is One Mirage Place, and actually, this area, just getting cornered to City Hall here, has gone through three different names. First, it was University Executive Park, and then it was Northern Trust Plaza, and then One Mirage Place, so we've got a little history there. And then the last slide here, it's the team that really put this project together and actually worked on it through its completion, it was quite a team, from the contractors, the subcontractors, to our inspectors in the Public Works Department, in our Building Department, to the utility companies doing the design plans and seeing it through to the end, to our Public Works staff and City Attorney Office, tremendous support from them, to Bruce Harry in our Public Works, his expertise in this field and his direction, couldn't have done this project without him, for sure. Our city managers, Mr. Binder and Mr. Pratt, actively engaged on this project, and whenever we needed any assistance or any support, they were always there, so thank you. And then the redevelopment successor agency, the impact that, the decision that you had to move this project forward is just, is tremendous. I've received so many calls from not only property owners here in the town and business owners thanking us for this project, but also from residents from other cities who have wondered, how did you do this? You know, how can we do this? How can we talk to our city council or, at the time, redevelopment agencies? I've even received calls from property owners outside of the Coachella Valley, a couple of calls came in from the Anaheim, Orange County area, and then along the beach area, Huntington Beach, saying this just doesn't happen. I mean, at best, they have assessment districts that are formed. And so the impact that you've made has been reaching, you know, not only in this valley, but beyond. Excuse me. And last, but not least, excuse me, the residents and business owners of Ranch Mirage, the patience and cooperation that we've received from them has been tremendous. They were oftentimes our eyes and ears out in the field, letting us know what's going on, and really helping us with the project, so just major thanks to them as well. So let's go ahead and we can shift our attention to the staff report, and, pull that up here. And our recommendation on this, now this staff report is geared towards the, just the final phase, the first two phases, the Tamarisk area and the Magnesia Falls Cove area, that's already been accepted, so this is just this final phase that we're working on right now. And the background, okay, so the request actually is to accept the subject improvements and authorize staff to record the notice of acceptance with the county recorder's office. The background, we pretty much covered that, as well as I have listed here, fourteen locations carry on to the second page, and we pretty much covered all those areas. And then the contract was given, the contractor was VCI Telecom, and they managed the entire operation, the backbone of the undergrounding, clear to the service connections relating right up to the houses. And if you could take a look at page number three, there's a project cost analysis. We have a table there that lists all the project costs. VCI Telecom's contract was roughly three point five million, change orders just a little under a hundred thousand, so their total construction cost was roughly three point five million. And then the additional costs were inspection services, material testing, utilities, and the miscellaneous costs, and that totals six point, six point eight million. And then the budget was seven point four million, and we have, we have the cost at six point eight million, so that leaves a budget balance of five hundred and fifty-seven thousand. And that, those funds aren't actually available since the RDA has been dissolved, but that just shows that we did come under budget. So the staff recommends acceptance of the subject improvements and authorize staff to file the notice of acceptance with the county recorder's office. Thank you.
Great. Any questions for staff on this?
I'd just make one comment or two to add to what Randy just said, to show residents of Ranch Mirage how the city council and staff do try to do as much as possible to benefit and enhance the community. When we passed the ordinance allowing us to underground all of the residential overhead lines, we also passed authority for the city, acting through the redevelopment agency, to pay for the connection of each piece of property to the undergrounded lines. Like sewers, most people have to pay for that connection. And that was a discussion that we had, I remember to this day, and we agreed that, no, we would do this so it cost our residents nothing beyond reduction of our redevelopment agency funds. And with respect to the redevelopment agency, as it turned out later, the state killed the redevelopment agency, and if we hadn't done it then, it never would have been done. So everything was rather propitious to move forward at that time, and we moved forward as, in unison, as just one agent, and it was a great, great moment for all of us.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's only appropriate that Councilman Hobart make the motion.
I cannot agree enough. It's a wonderful accomplishment, and we really thank everybody for their efforts, staff and the visionary leaders that moved this forward.
You know, Mr. Mayor, the really, the two big benefits to this were the safety from reducing all those overhead lines, but also the property values.
Absolutely.
Everybody in Ranch Mirage agrees that with elimination of those poles, not only made it more beautiful, but also increased their property values.
Reaching every home.
Which is what we're here trying to do for everybody.
Bruce?
I just wanted to add something. I just wanted to thank Randy and the rest of my staff. This was a huge, huge accomplishment, and even the utility companies had never done anything like this before. We were the cutting edge on all this utility undergrounding. We had to coordinate Verizon, Time Warner Cable, Edison into common trenches, we had to work with every property owner on transfers of utilities, so they were out less than a couple of hours during the day. So it was just a tremendous effort by Randy to get this all accomplished, and it was a very difficult project, and I want to congratulate Randy on a job well done.
Thank you, thank you. And not only did your department have to do that, but we had, as the odds would tell us, we had a fair percentage, a small percentage, but a good number of residents who were totally opposed to it, wouldn't even let us go into their property, and Bruce and Randy had to deal with that on a property-by-property basis. And I remember we used to discuss what frustration it was to have somebody saying, "I don't want that." It's the best thing that ever happened to them, but, you know, it's tough to persuade them, but you guys did a wonderful job of persuading the recalcitrant to join the bandwagon.
Thank you. Bravo.
Dana, would you like to close this up on this? What's that? Public speaker? Oh, sorry, thanks so much. Does any member of the public have any questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none.
If I can just say one thing?
Oh, I'm so sorry, Iris.
That's all right, no problem.
Apologize.
I want to extend my thanks also to everyone, and especially Dana, who had all the wonderful foresight, and for everyone persevering on behalf of all the residents and the businesses, and especially all the Realtors. We all give you a wonderful thanks, and thank you for sticking it out. I know it wasn't easy.
Absolutely.
Well, I would move that as the successor agency, we accept the subject improvements and authorize staff to record the notice of acceptance with the county recorder's office.
I'll second it.
And that motion passes unanimously. All right, that concludes our regular meeting today. We will now recess into closed session. I'll turn it over to the city attorney to tell us what we'll be discussing there. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council at this point is going to recess into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 5495, seven point eight, to address the Ranch Mirage Employees Association situation, and council will also confer legal counsel pursuant to Government Code Section 5495, six point nine, regarding two potential litigation items.
Thanks, Steve. We'll go ahead and wrap up here with the fortieth anniversary of the city of Ranch Mirage trivia question, and in honor of the Craft Nabisco Championship, I think that's going on this week, I think this is an excellent one to wrap up with. This involves Dinah Shore, who we have a street named after. Did you know that in the first years of the Craft Nabisco Championship, Dinah Shore, on the last- on the last night of the tournament, would invite staff and players over for spaghetti and meatballs?
I knew that.
I do, too.
I heard that the other night at the dinner.
I would swear that.
All right, we'll now recess into closed session, thanks.